Thank you.
I'd like to call the work session to order here for Monday, April 7th, and I think I will turn it over to our city manager, Scott Sanders, to introduce this item.
All right. Good morning, Mayor, council members, all the public that are here this morning on this topic. Nick has the one topic for this morning. It's been a while since we've dove into the debt side of our ledger and the policies that we've had. They've, many of them have been in place for many, many years and have worked well, but we see an opportunity here to make an upgrade on our balance, and this is a good thing. This is a long time coming because we had said years ago that we would have more than the minimum of the old policy and give us an opportunity at some point in time, which we're at this morning, to talk about actually raising our minimum balance limits. So I'll turn it over to Nick and go from there.
Thank you, Scott. Good morning, Honorable Mayor and council members. As Scott alluded to, we will be talking about our long-term debt and policy discussion. It will kind of present a summary today of kind of the flows of funds, so the issuances that we have in the past, as well as some of our scheduled obligated payments, and then kind of what our planned debt issuance are between the budget and the capital improvement plan that we have, and then kind of the history of our debt service levy, the state and council debt limit policy that we have, as well as our council-directed fund balance policy. So those are kind of the topics that we have. We will be focusing more on the general obligation or GO debt today, but I do have a slide on revenue debt as well. So as of our last bond issuance, which was 2024 A and B, which was November of 2024, so just this past November, when we issued those, this is the bonds that we have outstanding as of that time period. So this slide shows we have debt varying over the course of the last 10 years, from 2015 through the 2024. The total amount outstanding as of November and as of today is the 663840, 663 million that we have outstanding. This kind of shows you the duration of time between the original amount being issued and the amount that's still outstanding as of today. The history of the revenue issuance that we have here, this is all the revenue specific, so these are only payable by the revenue funds from these operating funds. So you can see from the parking revenue, we have the City Hall parking garage across the street. That's LPA that we had from that back in 2017. Sanitary sewer, we have just the SRF loans, which is the state revolving fund loans that we have from the sewer separation projects. We have paid off all of the revenue debt that we had from sanitary sewer. All we have are those SRF loans. And if we look to the right columns, we have the stormwater sewer revenue bonds, which we do have some revenue bonds, as well as some refunding bonds back from 2016 within that. So you can kind of see that we have a little bit more on that side because we had quite a few projects on that. And as we look at our citywide master plan within the stormwater, we'll see the reviewing in the capital projects going forward if we need to do any additional issuance on that side. As of today, our current capital improvement plan does not have anything other than our general obligation bonds to be issued.
Would it be helpful to see the interest rates just over time? I can imagine for the last decade or so, they were fairly constant, but that's an assumption.
It also depends on the dollar amount and the duration of time as well. So, for example, the 2024 A was about 3.5%, and then varying all the way back. Some of the refundings, we'll have to go back, I can go back and kind of show you the varying of those. That's the coupon rate that we actually pay on it versus what the true interest rate cost was. So I probably put it, I could send out information that just has that column of true interest rate, because there's two different things that we do based off of when we actually...
Serious?
Yeah. There's a difference between the coupon rate that we pay, as well as the true interest cost, based off of when we actually issue it and what the market is. So it would be helpful to probably have both.
I would agree with that, that, you know, generally, the interest rates get higher with the maturities. Every year, there's a maturity of principal payment, and so you pay a different interest rate with each year within a bond series, and typically, that's going up over time. So the original TIC is important to say, when we issued these, this is the average rate at that point in time. But now, because we've paid off many years, the later years are oftentimes at a higher coupon, which then make those refundable, because now they're in a shorter timeframe, if that makes sense.
Maybe this wouldn't be as informative to me as I thought.
Darn, I tried. That's right.
There is a nuance to it.
Yeah, there's a whole industry on that thing, so.
Yeah.
Great question.
Yeah, it is a great question.
Thank you.
Do we have a chart that shows when each of these are paid off?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. There will be a future slide by fiscal year, how much we have to pay. So that will be, I think, one of the next upcoming slides. One thing that I will talk about a little bit more that I kind of went over, the ones that actually have TIF at the back of it are 100% funded by TIF abatement, and then the other ones are kind of both what's covered by debt levy, as well as the increment, the TIF funding as well. The only two that are kind of unique is that 2020 A and 2020 D bonds that we have up there. Those have those little asterisks on it. That actually still has some revenue, abated debt. So the 2020 A has, I want to say, stormwater that's abating some of that, and then the 2020 D, there's solid waste that's abating that one, because a big chunk of that issuance went towards MSE 2. So they were kind of funding some of that cost as well. Here's the schedule of payments. As you can see, this makes up that same amount that we were talking about, the 663.8 million dollars of principal, and as you can see, that's scheduled out to 2044. Again, that's if we hold these bonds out the full duration, and that's how it would actually get paid out. You can see that we are, given the timing of those bonds, we usually, as you can see, the oldest one that we have on hand currently today is 2015, because usually what ends up happening is the interest rates are at a rate that you can actually pay off those larger coupons early. We haven't quite seen that with, but with a four-point, or, I'm sorry, 3.4, almost 3.5 that we had issued last year. We'll, we'll be looking at that again this next issuance. We review that every year to determine if it is worth that refunding opportunity or not. As you can see, this has our interest per, that we pay, we pay semi-annually on the interest. So we basically pay about half those interest rates in December and a half of those in June of every year. So this kind of shows you the fiscal years and how much we pay, both in principal and interest as we, as time progresses. So as we are coming up to budget approval later, or hearings for budget later today, this is the planned debt within the budget and the capital improvement plan. As you can see here, we've got multiple issuance types. So we have the GO bonds and the GO bonds TIF-related ones. Those are the ones funded by TIF abatement. And then we have a taxable bond. So those taxable bonds are things that we issue for taxable purposes. So a lot of our redevelopment-type funds that we issue debt for is a taxable issuance. So we issue those on a shorter term, because they tend to be a higher interest rate cost. So we do a $5 million issuance, and usually, they are only a five-year payoff. So we don't even get, it's never out far enough even to refund them, because we pay them off as quick as we do. When we go to actually issue the bonds in the fall, you'll actually see the GO bonds TIF and the GO bonds regular kind of being merged together to be issuance, because they're both tax-exempt. It's just for the capital improvement plan, we want to distinctly put them out separately, so that you can kind of see what we're issuing for. The 2026 is kind of a larger issuance this year. For 2026, just from the simple, a couple of key projects that we have, which is Walnut Street, we've got Southeast Connector, a couple other major projects that we have that are making up that larger dollar amount. But you can see that the GO bonds that we have there are ones where we are, that are covered by our debt levy and local option on the property tax relief piece. So as you can see, that we're actually getting that below the 40 million that we've talked about in the past of trying to get our capital projects to under 40 million a year of bond issuances.
Nick, go back one, just quick. The TIF, isn't it paying the taxable bonds, or no?
It is. It's abating it, yes.
The 5 million, isn't it?
Oh, not the taxable.
For the public improvement for those areas, or no?
The TIF ones are the ones that actually are TIF. The 5 million isn't TIF-related.
But aren't we making the improvements with some of the...
Some of them are within districts, but we don't have that as a part of the debt, because it's the different things like the Blitzamp Light, the Ion, and NFC and DC. So those are funds that we don't necessarily want them to be within a specific urban renewal area. We want it to be able to be citywide.
All right.
So, yep. This chart here talks about kind of where our debt levy is today, and going all the way back to fiscal year 2017. As you can see, that our, the blue section is actually where our debt levy is and has been those particular fiscal years, and where we have suggested it for, or recommended it in the proposed budget for 2026. The gray area is if we would have done our CIP, the CIP work that we have done within our GO bond issuances of the past and where we are modeled, this is, that would be where our debt service would have had to have been to pay off the debt that we have. So that gray area is what that local option, the property tax relief, has allowed for us to pay. And you can kind of see from our fiscal year 2026, that we would have almost been double what we are today from our debt service levy.
Well, we wouldn't have been able to do the projects we've done.
Correct. Yes, because that's what, it would have taken a doubling of our debt levy to do the amount of work that we have done.
I think it's important, not only to point the increase, but we wouldn't have done that.
Had that, yeah.
Can I take just a moment of privilege, if I could? As a numbers guy and a finance, I know it looks like a small dip in the last two years, where the rate would be able to come down, in the sense of how much the sales tax is paying for. For those that have been around a few years, you'll recall that we, several years ago, I guess, we had a problem that we always knew was out five or six years, and we were able to work through all of that with a lot of different solutions and push that off to a degree. Now that is entirely gone. Under current state law of how property taxes work, we have a great solution, and it's shown here, that not only is it stable, but there's light at the end of the tunnel about five years out, four or five years out, as that continues to drop off on the back end. So I just, I appreciate being able to really make that clear, that that was no small task. That was a lot of different solutions over six, seven, the last six, seven years or more to resolve our capital issue. If we stick to the 40 million-ish of CIP debt service paid debt, we'll be, we'll continue down this path that we see here and be in a pretty good place. Now, all of that's subject to change if the rules change up on the Hill, but just know that this is the kind of solution we were looking for, and we got there, and we're anxious to share that with the credit rating agencies to show them just how much under control this is. Thank you.
So when you talk about rules, are you talking about just a different tax policy, or a different TIF policy, or what rules are we...
So, all of the above.
Okay.
Because if there are pressures in one area, we often have to look for solutions in others. And so this was the smartest way, best practice way of showing how our sales tax is giving property tax relief.
Right.
But there are other ways of doing that on the general fund that get a little more challenging. And if we find the laws end up changing on us that put a lot of pressure on our operations, we may have to look at solutions like that.
Okay.
And that has an impact across the entire capital and operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm going to go into kind of the policies that we have today, between the state debt limit and the council policy of the debt limit. So the state debt limit is 5% of 100% valuation, which is the assessed value, or market rate that people have on the houses. So it's 5% of the total valuation within the municipality. And the council policy set forth is 80% of that, of that debt limit at the state. So this is one where, as we, now this next slide has got a lot of information. This was pulled from our 2024 A bond issuance with some of the footnote disclosures there. But as of November of 2024, when we issued our 2024 A and B bonds, this is the way that the calculation came out. So you can kind of see our 2023 actual valuations, or assessed value, was 19.3 billion, was our 100% valuation within the city of Des Moines. That 5% creates a legal debt limit of just under 965 million of debt that we could have outstanding. So there's a couple different debts that would be subject to the state debt limit, which is, as you can see, the general obligation debt that we've talked about already, and then there's some other items that are subject to this same debt limit that we have, which is lease debt that's paid by the general fund, which are, you can kind of see outstanding lease obligations from the general fund, Section 108 loan, there's some additional funds there, and then TIF rebates, TIF rebate agreements that were payable within the budget. So those are basically, with the TIF agreements that we have, they're annually appropriated, and so they are subject to the debt limit based off the annual appropriation. So the budget that you guys approve, then they're subject to the state debt limit. So what this legal debt limit, so we have that capacity of that 280.7 million of capacity, that's where we have to not use that 20% from the council policy. So within this, we are actually using 71% of our debt limit, so we are 9% within our limit. So yes, we have capacity within that 80%, but just because we have the capacity, we still have to be able to pay it. So it's the twofold obligation outstanding, but then also, we have to be able to plan for that payment as we go.
Nick, the 80%, I don't know, guideline or...
Council, council policy, yep.
Yeah. Do other cities have a similar structure, just from what you know of, like peer cities?
Some do. I don't know what traditionally they put. Some actually just don't actually have a policy as to how much to be utilized. It just truly depends on the community and what they've seen as utilization. So for us, I think for us, we realize that 80% tends to be a ceiling to where it really shows your ability to pay versus how much you have outstanding. So it was a good rule of thumb, I think, for the city of Des Moines. The prior city that I worked at was a AAA, and so they actually didn't, they had a much lower cap because of that, yeah, the rating that they're in, kind of showing how much debt burden they had and the work that they had to do with that debt. So we'd have to significantly lower it if we ever targeted the AAA in the future. So the main discussion for today on a change, which will be at the council meeting tonight, is the council-directed fund balance policy. So not only, there's a lot of debt management policies that we have. One is obviously our debt limit. The other one is this fund balance that I wanted to talk about today. There's three different components to that policy, which is the general fund, the unassigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. Our current policy is 15% of our annual expenditures in our unassigned fund balance. We're asking to upgrade that up to 20% of the annual expenditures. And the main reason why we did this during the discussion of the budget is we are actually using some of the fund balance to balance the budget in fiscal year 2026. And so what we want to do is show that we're committed to a strong unassigned fund balance. We were above this limit, and I've got a slide coming up that kind of shows it, but this kind of shows that we are committed to keeping our floor not at 15, but up to 20% going forward, because our intention is to only use that fund balance to a limited degree. Some of the other items that are within this council policy is the general fund maintaining sufficient cash liquidity throughout the fiscal year. There's no update needed on that. What that kind of alludes to is the large majority of our revenue in the general fund is property tax, and so that is a large amount coming in on October and April. And so you have to make sure that you're accounting for those in a sufficient way to be able to have cash on hand to pay our bills. Our enterprise funds policy on, within this policy, is our working capital balance is not less than 20% at the end of the fiscal year, and that's been a good policy that we've had, and no update is needed as of today with that as well. Here's a chart I like. Kind of shows, the orange or red is our fund balance policy, and then the blue is actually our unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. So this shows kind of the history, all the way back to 2011, where we were right at the policy at 10%, and then kind of shows year after year where we were in, at the fiscal year end in each one of those fiscal years. Obviously, you can see that within that fiscal year '23 and '24 is very high. That is ARPA dollars kind of being within the general fund and then spending it down within the fiscal year 2025. So you can kind of see that that spiked, but will come down within that 2025. The anticipated, with the amended budget and the proposed budget of 20, the amended '25 and the proposed '26, it does show fund balance estimated at about 27.5% in those years. So we still have kind of the cushion between where our policy, this policy would get updated to if approved tonight, versus what we actually anticipate with our, with the proposed amended budget and the proposed recommended budget tonight. Kind of an overview to take in consideration as we talk about debt, especially the general obligation debt, is to recognize that not all project can fit within the capital plan, understanding that ongoing projects, as opposed to new projects, make up the large portion of our CIP. Now, to kind of give you an example of ongoing projects, I did include the examples of ongoing projects on the later slides in the handout, so you can actually look at those, if you'd like to get an idea of what those projects are and what those costs are within the fiscal year 2026. So our strategy about adding new projects to limit our bond issuance, so, you know, significantly higher interest rates in recent years in comparison to what we had not too long ago with the market uncertainty, we do want to maintain our AAA or AA+ . So with that, we want to kind of make sure that we kind of show and keep our stable issuance within our plan for that fiscal year '27 through '29, which we showed earlier with our plan being under that 40 million. And so that's kind of where we want to kind of have that stable issuance of what's covered on our debt service levy and local option sales tax pieces. And I left as much time for questions as you guys would like. Go ahead, Mr.
Quite a few.
Yep.
The early slides, like, especially the scheduled GO debt payments, this one right here, does this, is this scheduled before we vote today on the upcoming budget?
Yes.
So, so, like, let's go back to what Scott said. If we could maintain a $40 million GO issuance, you know, for the coming years, could we see this chart with, if we issued another 40, at a, you know, somebody smarter than me could pick an interest rate?
I'll kind of estimate, yeah. Yeah, we could, we could kind of have the planned principal and interest based off of what we already model. We already look at that today, which allows us to do this modeling here of what we see in those four years, as well as we look at that even beyond this timeframe. So yes, we do have estimates and ballpark figures of what we think interest rates are going to be. So we base this debt service levy plan, assuming those $40 million issuance that we have.
I appreciate that. So this chart, the chart you were just on, factors a continuation of 40 million, but the one before doesn't?
No, I wanted to show you the current bonds that we have outstanding.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's very helpful.
Yep.
But could we see what it would look like?
Yeah.
For, you know, what our payments are? I just think it goes out of... I just think it goes out of public discussion and then like it popped up this year and people are like, holy, whoa, you guys got a lot of debt. And it's like it's been very planned. It's within the law. It's within our policy that's tighter than the law.
It's actually less than what we previously.
Right.
Right. It's more manageable at the moment.
Yes.
So the site like the a more a more philosophical question than I have a last question. I'm also interested in what the like, I don't know that we have a policy about why we have the reserve fund, like what it would be used for. Is like, do we say like it can only be touched in these circumstances? Or is the or or because of our bond rating and everything else, we're never going to use it? So it's not really like a?
Because we're never going to get to AAA.
There is some details in there.
There's some, yeah, there's some details within the policy. But in essence, when when you are talking about a percentage like this, and this is the rule of thumb that I I prefer, is if you think about your unassigned fund balance, it's good to have in that 25% to kind of maintain the liquidity. Because if you think about it, you're you're waiting, you have to wait for your largest component of revenue in October and you still have three months payments, three months worth of activity. So if things were cash for cash flow, that's why that 25%. It's different when you're actually talking about unassigned fund balance versus cash or anything like that. But that's kind of like the rule of thumb of kind of where my mindset kind of goes in that regard, but.
I would just add that it's the total reserve fund policy is a layered philosophy. So Nick is right. The very first is that you can you got to be able to pay your bills month to month. And because of those two big payments on property taxes every six months, right before you get it, you're at your low point. And so it, you know, bare minimum, bare minimum, probably 15% solves that problem. And then you start to layer in the unknown situations that you might just need an extra million here, you know, a half a million there type of thing. And then so you start to add in the comfort level that you'll always be able to stay above that. And then you look for yet another layer of preparedness for an economic downturn. That's worth another 5% right there. So it's a layered answer that we absolutely have to have the minimum to to follow the rest of the policies such that you're not negative on the month right before property taxes. And then you, we could have more discussion about the layers above that and the comfort level. But I think we'll still end up in a pretty similar place to where we are. Is that, you know, you want some comfort and then you want to prepare for that two-year bad downturn like we're in right now, where you might need three or $4 million for a couple of years to get through a rough rough patch. So and that would put you at that 25.
Yeah, that's where you want to be at that 25, yeah.
So if we if we increased our 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 amount to 20, does the multi-year budget projection that we have tonight get us to 20? Because I know this is the only year that you need to take money from reserves. We're we're going to do that again at least once.
Correct. That's anticipated.
Yes.
One more time. If if things work out the way we want it to, it's only one more time. But we're prepared for a third year if needed decreasing, right? The amount that we would utilize would decrease.
One more time next budget cycle, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, fiscal year 27, which we haven't really talked a lot about. But we've planned that there would be a small amount, not small, like half as much of of the general fund, a million and a half-ish, 2 million on the high end.
I think it's good just that if we think that, we should be transparent about it as far out as we can.
Yep. And your first question that I want to make clear is that, no, we're not going to get down to 20%. It'll still be something above that.
Okay.
Yep, because this actually shows about 27% at the end of 26 is what our forecast is right now.
And I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but and I like, I think most people here, what?
The next, can I just follow up on this train of thought? So essentially for the public and for our benefit, I mean, we anticipate that blue and orange line getting closer over the next couple of years is essentially what what this line of question.
A little bit, just a little bit.
We still want to keep.
Right, there's going to be more separation than there was.
In 2011?
Fiscal years, 2011 through, we might be close to where we were at in the 2015, 2016 timeframe. Where there's.
Just generally, we're going to want to maintain about another 5%.
It's where I'd like to be, yeah.
Above the 20. So I would see that coming down to closer to 25.
The blue line.
The blue line.
But like my one comment about this margin is like, I think it's wise that we have it and I think it's clearly what the people that finance our projects want. But I also think we need to translate it into what's good for our citizens. You know, in the event of a catastrophic emergency, it gives us margin to be able to respond for things that weren't in the budget. Like that's that's where I was kind of going with my question about what kind of uses could we have for it? And and why is it important to be above 15 or above 20 wherever it is? We've all lived in town long enough to, you know, watch water or storms or, you know, all kinds of things really disrupt our planning for a year or two. So like from a citizen perspective, I'd want to know that one of the reasons we're doing it isn't just chasing, trying to make Wall Street people happy so we get better interest rates, but that we are really set up to respond to the unexpected in town. And and I hope our policy kind of helps with that. My my last my last question is, and maybe it's more just about this year's CIP and other projects. And I think the council knows I like to keep, I'd like to stay in our lane here. But I think we're in a period of time where we're passing our budget, where it's hard to stay completely in our lane or maybe this is our lane. Like most of the national discussion about tariffs touch things that hit our debt limit, you know, that we bond for. And do do we have, do we have a plan and does the council have a policy to kind of evaluate what we're going to do if prices skyrocket on, you know, bridge materials, road materials, building materials, office desks, whatever it is?
So we have been talking about that in the last couple, three weeks, four weeks with with executive orders in particular. There are, not to dive in too deep this morning, but things like fly ash and things of that nature that are meant to help farmers and the utilization can also help us with with road constructions and things of that nature. So we have seen where things will impact us. Obviously, steel is one of them that we're concerned about. It's a good thing that we're finishing up our last bridge here. We're also, you know, the the amount of steel is is limited in like fire stations, things of that nature. We're not building any big buildings in the in the near future. So that's helpful as well. But we can, we can actually set aside some time if the council would like to to bring forward where our main concerns are, dealing with the tariffs and and what we see is, you know, give you an idea if we're talking 5% increases in these types of projects versus others. But, you know, the bread and butter of what we do is concrete and and work like that. So at this part, at this moment, we're not overly concerned, but very, you know, watching it and analyzing it. So we can.
I just, I want to be in a position where the 5% don't mount, you know, one at 5% is something we probably handle pretty well. 20 at 5% probably not so much. 10 at 20% is kind of catastrophic to the number of projects that we're passing tonight that I doubt we could execute on if if costs go up like like some are really.
We'd have less projects. And we and we review projects each year to update the the capital improvement plan based off of what we're seeing for costs as well. So each year that we we do that, we kind of reassess what we can pay for. And so that's kind of part of our annual process.
Yeah. I bring it up because as soon as we pass it, every neighborhood is going to say this project's happening, you know, this summer or next fall or in 2027. And people care about that. But I do feel like we're passing a budget. We still have a lot to learn.
Well, that's all, too many unknowns right now.
No, that's true.
Any other questions? If there's no other questions?
Yeah, my apologies. We had a second topic that needed some more time. So as as requested, we typically have two. But this morning, this is this is all we have for you.
Next topic just packs the chambers, doesn't it?
It'll get rewatched online quite a few times, I'm sure.
I guess at this point, the work session is now over and we will reconvene at 4:40, I believe, for proclamation and then our regular meetings at 5 o'clock. So we will see everybody this evening. Thank you, Nick, for your presentation.